I did not. Ladies and gentlemen, today is Tuesday, July 27th. The time is 5:32 PM. We are here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session, and we will be returning when that meeting is over, and I will be announcing our work session. Thank you for your patience, and we should be back with you shortly. Howdy, everyone. Thanks for waiting. The time is 5:49 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we are convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. So the public is invited. We're back through these doors to my left, your right. Come on in, guys. Have a seat over here anywhere. It's open seating.
What's that?
She needs two minutes. She's got some technology.
Is that beer?
No, sir. It's my daily green tea.
That's what you say.
Careful, you're giving people ideas.
They didn't have it for a long time. I literally have been drinking it since I was diagnosed with cancer. And then it was like gone. They were like, oh, there's a shortage. And just started having it again. Only certain Starbucks have it.
New revenue source.
What's one of this?
Do you like green tea?
I love green tea. And it's just, I did a lot of combination of herbal, healing, and medicine. And green tea's an antioxidant. White tea's the one that's better for you.
I like white tea, you know, regular. But I had to drink another bit to acquire the taste of it.
There is a taste. There's a taste after, yes. Yeah, I always drank it, and it just became a thing.
Howdy, everybody. It is, we've already convened into work session. We've got, item A is discussion regarding agenda items. Does anybody have any questions, comments about any of our agenda items? John?
Yes, Mayor. I want to ask a couple of questions on the agenda, item B, on the time clock.
Jared?
Yes. Good evening.
Hey. Just a couple of questions. It looks like we're trying to change out the entire device and software?
Yes.
When was the current device and software? When was it purchased?
It was, I think we said 2017. I don't remember exactly what month. But we purchased the exact time.
So if it was 2017, it looks like what, 2023 was the expected, I guess, date that we were going to change? So like five years span? Is that normal for hardware? Hardware and software, things like this?
So yes, for hardware. And what these are, it's like a tablet. So it's kind of like an iPad, although it's running a Windows software. And so Windows, Microsoft are the ones that, you know, get to tell us when they're going to stop support. And so when we procured them in 2017, we didn't realize that in 2018, they were going to announce that they weren't going to support Windows 8.1 any longer. Then they announced that they would do the extended support out to '23. So the intention was to keep the hardware for at least five years. So that's, our standard replacement on most hardware is four to five years for laptops and tablets and those types of things.
So is that the new one that we're going to get? Is that basically what we're thinking? Five-year lifespan?
Yes. Yes. And so, and that's why we actually, since we're turning in a year early, basically.
I saw that.
Yeah, we actually got to recoup some dollars that are left on the hardware.
Okay. On the quote, I saw that the entire, I guess, the 2022 device, was it?
22.
Yeah. It was $52,000, but then there's an added cost for, I guess, maintenance. It says 6622.
That's correct.
Is that a recurring cost every year going forward for five years?
Yes. So every year we'll pay 6600 for the next five years on the devices themselves. And that's part of the Executime software, which is the Tyler package.
Okay. So in essence, I guess we're spending about, what, $85,000 total? If we looked into five-year forecast of spending 6600 per year plus the $52,000?
Yeah, so I follow what you're saying. So yeah, technically, yes, with the, so we pay annual maintenance currently for devices and the software. This just happens to be the support for the software running on the time clocks themselves. So yes, each year going forward, we will pay another 6600, whatever the...
6622.
There you have it. 6622. So we'll pay that every year going forward, and then until we replace the devices, and then we'll do it again.
And that's, again, that's the five years we're looking at for this device?
That's what we're, yeah. I mean, unless Microsoft decides to change the operating systems again, and they tell us we need to change it out, then we'll...
The 6622, what does that entail?
So there's software running on the tablet itself. So the application basically runs. So when someone gives the clock in, the application is on that screen. If there's any issues with the hardware or software of those devices, then Tyler will be the support to remedy or resolve whatever issues we have.
And the upgrades also is included or no?
Correct. Upgrades are included. We do maintain patch levels. So if there's patches that are required for the device itself, we will do that in-house. But we're not able to upgrade the actual operating system because it's their software running all that operating system that they require, that they do it.
That's all. Okay, thank you. Cool.
Thanks, Jared.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions or comments about agenda items? All right. Seeing none, let's move to item B. Wanted to have just a real general discussion on our retreat, kind of how the, you know, we've had a couple of weeks to, three weeks, I guess, to sit back and think about what went on and kind of mull over the, what we learned, what we were told, what we experienced. There was a couple of things that hit home with me. I thought Friday night, Mike's presentation on the governance. You know, it's good to hear that stuff again, and I think he probably can't hear it enough. I really appreciated his approach to the long-term governance, you know, that we as a council are responsible for making the decisions that are going to take us forward into the future. And I thought that was very, that really hit home with me. So I really, really enjoyed that. And then, you know, the next day, Marcel. Man, two guys are completely different in the way that they present, but they're both extremely effective, I thought. I particularly liked Marcel's hard-on-the-problem and soft-on-the-people approach. That, to me, really, that really hit home. You know, there was a lot of other things. I learned a lot about Mike since we were paired up together, which I won't repeat right now. But, you know, I learned a lot about myself through the analyses. And I'm still, some of those I'm still not sure about, but I'm working through that. Anybody have any comments? Yes?
I actually have a question and I have a comment. I may have missed it on my email, because I didn't see it. But did you send us the information that Marcel sent you that had everybody's?
Yes, we did. It's on your council SharePoint.
Oh, it's on his SharePoint. Okay. I was expecting an email.
No, it's too large.
Okay. I told Marcel, I was like, I didn't get it. Okay, cool. That's my thing.
Sure.
That's why I said I may have missed it, so...
So the answer is no, I didn't, but...
Gotcha. Okay. And then, so I can go back and look at that. But I really enjoyed both speakers. I thought they did a great job. There was areas where they complemented each other, and then there were kind of areas where they had their unique expertise. I loved the conversation on Friday about, what's the difference between govern, governing and leading? Yeah. And so, just kind of thinking through, what does that mean? And then, I, you know, I think Marcel does a great job of, you know, just kind of highlighting the points. And one of the things that stood out for me was kind of meeting people where they are. And, you know, I learned a lot about, just like we learned about Mike, I learned a lot about Bijou. And I think we were paired up together. And I've said that to him as well. So that was really good, just because I think sometimes people have different interpretations of words. And so talking through that, what does that mean for each person, and then kind of where we meet each other? And then I learned a lot about myself, and I think there's some areas too where I'm still trying to figure it out. But it's great information to go back to and read through. And anyway, I really enjoy it. I would love to see some sort of a follow-up to it, because I think it was a lot of information in a short period of time. And I know for me, I would love to continue to dig into, now kind of how we put some things into action. And why are you laughing?
I didn't pay you to say this, did I?
No. Okay, this is just me saying, I'm all about like, and, because I guess at work too, like, okay, so we have this document that I carry around with me, right? But then what do we do with it? And especially, what do we do with it at council, with each other? And how do we move things forward? So...
So in line with that, we actually cut Marcel's session short by about three hours.
Right.
He really wanted most of the day. We told him no. So we have invited him back for our fifth Tuesday in August.
Okay.
Then he's going to try to close out his session then. So hopefully, he'll take care of everything we were just talking about.
Cool. Those are my comments.
So thanks for that lead-in.
But you're welcome to pay me for it if you'd like to.
That's okay.
I'll take a piece.
Don, Mark, John, Cliff?
Well, the benefit of our audience here and the staff that's here, we have a great staff. And this man right here does a great job of hiring his staff. But then the voters come on, and they put us on the council. And so we have to bring consultants in so that they know how they can deal with us, you know, to get things done. So that's basically the essence of what we're trying to do.
No? What's that?
We didn't have to break down consultant for how we had to deal with you.
Well, it's not how we have to deal with staff. We know they're going to be fine. Us dealing with each other?
There you go.
I just sort of ignored that.
Don?
I don't have a whole lot to add, except that being new to everything, in fact, that retreat was before even meetings started for me. It was a good time to sort of reframe, sort of set my mind exactly sort of how we need to interact with each other and what's happening with everyone else. So I thought it was beneficial. Self-awareness, I think, is crucial for everybody. And I'll go out on a limb to say, not everybody is always as self-aware as maybe they should be. And so I think any exercise where you take a step back and sort of have somebody, you know, have someone put a mirror in front of you and say, this is sort of how you look, is always beneficial. So that was certainly helpful. I, like you, don't know that I agree with everything, but maybe that means I need to become more self-aware than I am currently. But so it is always good to take those moments to sort of become more self-aware.
Well, the thing that bothers me about part of mine was the fact that it showed that I am not a data-driven person. And I went around and queried people at work, and they just laughed at me. They said, you're the most data-driven person around. And I'm still trying to, maybe that's the difference between putting my work hat on and the council hat. Maybe I'm, you know, and he did admit. And that was one of the very interesting things, is that it's very easy. You can shift, even if you're in the 99 percentile, you can shift to the other, you know, the opposite extreme. And I know one of mine, it shows that when I'm in my happy spot, I'm 99% over here. And when I'm stressed, I'm 94% on the other extreme. And that's a huge change.
Fair enough. But a couple of mine, you have to sit there, and I think it goes to what you were saying about understanding words. So mine says I'm not trusting, which, you know, I think I am relatively trusting. So I got to find out, what do they mean by trusting? And then I shared this with Mike, but it also said that I don't like people or something along those lines. Is that what it was?
I knew that.
Jared, the great quote you had after that was, fifty-some-odd years of church just went down the tube.
Exactly. So I've gone to church all these years. And clearly, it's not paying off at all. I don't like people. So I have to take a step back and sort of evaluate, what does that mean? Or, you know, how did I answer it certain way?
I think that goes to the introverted, extroverted, what feeds you. I could be wrong, but Bijou and I had a long conversation about the word trust and skepticism, and what does that mean? So anyway. I'm looking forward to the follow-up conversation, because I think we can ask those questions.
I've always said, from a trust standpoint, I've always said that I'm a trusting person. And then, in fact, I trust too easily. But just don't lose my trust, because then you'll never get it back. Well, that evaluation showed I'm very skeptical, so, you know, I'm... Yes, I realize that once you lose my trust, it's hard to get it back. But maybe that's the skepticism part coming out. I don't know. I'm still working on it. This is not an instant, this is not a one-time-only shot, so... John, Mark, you guys have anything to add?
I do none.
All right. Same here. All right. Well, thanks very much. I'm looking forward to having Marcel come in and kind of close us out. The morning Saturday, we've done these retreats for years, and we've gone to, you know, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And I know that I personally didn't get much out of the afternoon session, because I'm just brain-dead at that point. And so we really did ask Marcel to kind of limit it to, you know, to a manageable length of time. And it was time to leave when it was time to leave, but I think we covered what we needed to cover. So thanks for everybody's patience, and there will be more to come. Yes?
The only other thing I'll add is, at the end of the session, I think both Mike and the mayor mentioned that Marcel, or I think Marcel even said it, he's available to meet with everyone individually. Of course, that's up to everybody. But I will tell you that I did, and I really appreciated the one-on-one conversation. And it was very, you know, I wanted to be very focused on, help me understand these areas that I'm derailed. And let's focus in one area where I might want to, you know, how does that apply to council? So all that to say, I recommend everyone taking the time to meet with him for an hour and just go through that.
At least just nothing more to go through the assessment and...
Agreed.
...questions.
Yeah.
So one of the other items that came up during our retreat was the acoustics in the room. And I heard very vocally from several people. And Mike is going to be presenting his kind of status of where we are. I explained to Mark a bit, just not to take all of the thunder out of him, but the acoustics in the room were based on some decisions that we made back in the past. And Mike will go into that in more detail in, what, a couple of weeks?
Jessica, they're already, they're still working on some of the specs, right?
Yes, we need the specs, we're limiting the cost.
Right, we're limiting the cost.
So it'll be, it's to come, so we haven't forgotten that. Right. The last item from the retreat, and I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. We talked a little bit about our social media policy along the way. I wanted to pass out a fresh copy. These were sent out to your, well, they were put in our SharePoint site. And did anybody have any comments on the policy?
That's all right. The others got it.
And keep in mind, this is for basically all of our boards and commissions, all of our volunteers. It's, this is not, when I first got it, I thought it was for the city council, but it's not. It's for all of our volunteers at work in the city, as well as employees as well.
It's a social media policy for the organization.
So it's for the entire city. And, you know, there's some things that it's making, you know, us aware of and asking us to do certain things and not do just certain things. So I would ask if you have comments or have had a chance to read it. Now's the time to talk. Yes, ma'am?
How will we, or what's the plan on who is taking us to our volunteers and boards and commissions?
First is to get feedback from the council.
Okay.
And after we get the feedback, then we'll draft, we'll finalize that draft, because I don't know what comments we'll be getting.
Gotcha.
And having y'all sign up. This is a policy directive from the council. So once, if you decide to adopt one, once you adopt it, then we'll distribute it to the board and commission.
So we're still in the socializing?
Right.
Gotcha. But all that to say, thank you for doing this. I think it's really important as our organization continues to grow, and people are representing our city out there. So it's important to have some guidelines. This isn't anything new in any other organization, so...
No. In fact, I give a presentation to the graduating seniors at UNT, and I cover, my basic message to them is, from a professional standpoint, don't post anything. And that's kind of what I tell them. And they say, why? And I said, well, if you're going out looking for a job and you're making a comment, you know, and you may be making a very, you know, minor comment, but you never know what your company that you're going to interview for is looking for. And everything you post is public. And they're, oh, I didn't think of that. You know, because they're still in a very much, you know, social media world.
Yeah, that's their forever.
And it's, that's probably the hardest session I talk to them about. And that's coming as a, you know, manager of a large group.
Did you say this is already existing?
No.
Okay. It is not.
It is a draft, based on research on different things around the state and around the country, as far as just policy is concerned. We haven't had one with Hannah. It's something that she's been working on. So it's for your consideration, potential adoption, not adoption, whatever y'all would like to do with it.
Do we have a timeline on whom we want to...
This is in y'all's court.
Has anybody had a chance to download it on the SharePoint? So, okay, Kevin did, and those are his notes in there. You'll see the pain. That's Kevin's. He had a couple of comments in there. I'd suggest that if you have comments, do something similar. Don?
Can I ask something real quick? What's the definition of professional social media? Are these, I mean, assuming personal social media and professional social media, almost like they're defined terms? But what, I guess they're all...
Hannah's not in here, but the, there's, it's kind of a generally accepted term of professional, and it's work. You know, it's not, if you're, because Kevin raised a point about, there's a, I'll call it a campaign version versus a elected version. And there's certain criteria that's associated when you're campaigning versus when you're, as an elected official, I would say. Professional is the same way. If you're in your work, if there are whatever standards you have for your work, it applies.
Okay.
And I can't say in your banking world, what professional criteria you may have that guides you professionally.
Okay.
Architects, you know, ethics, more, you know, those kind of things. Same with attorneys and those kinds of things. But there are some provisions that deal with campaigns that are different.
All right. Just be prepared, we'll probably, I'll be pinging you or we'll be pinging you in two to four weeks for another review. So take some time and give it a read-through and make comments, if you would, please.
Yeah, just to say, just much like Kevin, on a couple of those comments, you know, Bob gets involved, because Bob reviewed this as a draft. And so he'll help clean up whatever, from a municipal law standpoint. So just write your questions out, highlight the sections or whatever. And this is really yours. It's not something that we're trying to dictate.
Any other questions or comments? Don?
I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but is there, just all communications go through Hannah of the city? Is that a policy of the city, like all the departments? All their communication to the public goes through Hannah or not? Is it centralized?
We have templates and guidance. She's a resource. But like PD, for example, they handle their own public information. Fire department handles their own, to the specifics of what they're doing. And Parks and Recreation, the team handles their own as well. But I don't know if you remember hearing this or not, that we have something, kind of a team of all the different folks who handle media relations in their particular departments, whether it's social media, advertising, or anything like that. So they meet on a regular basis.
Okay. I just didn't know, you know, some corporations are real strict on, nothing gets communicated except at a central point.
There's such specialty in PD or fire.
Right.
And then there's so much activity on parks.
Well, the idea that there's a team actually makes a lot of sense, too, that that group is talking always.
All right.
So they know what to, what to kind of put out there.
Right.
Mike? I'm going to assume the answer is yes, but I could be wrong. Did we look at other city?
Yes. And...
Social media?
And there's, there are some out there that are considered the best practices. And so a lot of this was based on that information for best practices. And if y'all like, I can have Hannah come in and do a talk-through on it, if that would help?
I think that would help a lot.
Okay.
Helpful.
Have Hannah come in and just talk through it?
Talk through it. It's kind of a Bob and Hannah team.
Yep. I love the idea, I think, kind of going with, with other comments that have been made about definitions, right? Just Don was saying, there's a couple of words in here that are capitalized. And so I think it's just important to understand how they're being defined. Right? I think that's what you're really, really into.
All right, okay. We'll make that arrangement.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item C, discussion regarding workforce transit. Ms. Mindy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to discuss workforce transit and to seek input and guidance from council on our workforce transit test program. I'll go into a little more history in just a few minutes. But as a quick introduction, the city is currently in the 10th month of a 12-month in a local agreement with Denton County Transit Authority to administer a workforce transit program. interlocal agreement with Denton County Transit Authority to administer a workforce transit program. The partnership is set up as follows. DCTA administers the contract and handles all administrative functions for the program for the city of Capel. And LIFT provides the first mile, last mile connectivity between designated transit stops and Capel businesses. The program is open to all Capel businesses and their employees. And we need direction from city council tonight to see if you're interested in renewing the interlocal agreement for another 12 months. DCTA staff will also be seeking approval to renew the contract from their board at their August meeting. And if city council would like to continue the program, we'll bring back the ILA for formal approval at one of your upcoming meetings. So now to provide a little history to the program. In previous years, city staff heard from several businesses that they had concern about attracting employees due to a lack of public transportation in Capel. We also lost businesses that were considering Capel for their home due to a lack of transportation. And we were also concerned about retaining some of the businesses that we already had. And so therefore, staff went out and researched other cities to see what they were doing to help their businesses. After reviewing all the options, staff felt the best solution was to enter a test program that provided the most flexibility to gauge what the true needs of workforce transit are for Capel. Staff planned to use this data to determine the long-term solution for Capel if there is a long-term solution needed. So we met with the North Central Texas Council of Governments, and they suggested a partnership with the transit authority to create the test program. Denton County Transit Authority was already working with LIFT, and they were willing to administer a contract on behalf of the city of Capel with them. And so therefore, staff pursued the interlocal agreement with DCTA. The initial interlocal agreement ran from October 1st of 2019 through September 30th of 2020. Staff went out and marketed the program to Capel businesses in a variety of ways. And the program did start slow, but started to gain momentum in December of 2019. And then ridership was steadily increasing until March of 2020, which is when things began shutting down due to COVID-19. City council agreed to renew the ILA with DCTA to provide an additional year of service to continue gathering data. Unfortunately, this current fiscal year has been impacted by COVID-19 also. So we feel like, or staff feels like, the city has not had complete data yet to really do an analysis for the long-term solution. But we have seen that ridership has increased this year already since things have started opening back up. And a few things that we've learned. Number one, riders are coming from all six designated transit stops. Number two, riders are traveling to a wide variety of businesses in Capel. Number three, riders are using the service seven days a week. And number four, the concentration of use is on the west side of town. So that brings us to today. Sorry. And you can see the ridership data right here. We've got, we had a, we had a total of 1,392 rides during the fiscal year 1920. And in eight months of fiscal year 2021, we've already had 1,416 rides. So we feel like that's going to just continue to grow this year. Again, we only have data through May right now, we should be getting our June data very soon. But that's just through the first eight months, how it's increased. So we've spent approximately $24,000 of the $50,000 we budgeted this current fiscal year. And basically, you can see the breakdown, $14,000 or approximately $15,000 has been spent on rides. Close to $9,000 has been spent to DCTA for administrative costs. So tonight, we're requesting to renew the contract for an additional 12 months to continue the test program through September 30th of 2022. Again, if city council is agreeable to this extension, we'll bring back the ILA at one of your future meetings. All other aspects of the program will remain the same, so all the transit stops will remain the same, the ridership costs will remain the same. And then we'll take that analysis of data, bring it back to you to kind of figure out what the next step should be for our workforce transit. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Thank you very much. Council questions? John?
Thank you, Mayor. So what happens if the program, if the usage goes over, exceeds $50,000 that's been budgeted?
So we do make all of the businesses sign up in order to participate in the workforce transit program. And so basically, we watch the numbers, and if we're getting close to a point where we can't continue to fund it for that year, we'll contact the businesses and let them know that either they'll have to pay the ridership cost, or we'll have to discontinue for the remainder of that year, or we'll come back to council and see if they would like to put more money in to finish it.
So at this time, are they making any contributions?
At this time, the businesses are not. We are doing this test program solely on the city's dime in order to kind of gauge the need. Now, the rider pays, so the rider pays a portion of the ride.
But I thought it was only up to like $2, and the rest of it, up to $15, we were actually paying that?
That's correct. And then anything over that, then the rider picks up the remainder cost.
Could you go over the rationale why some of the businesses, especially some of the large box stores, needed this?
Absolutely, so they were having a hard time attracting employees. And so what they were, they were looking at moving to a location, because the amount that they pay their employees, the employees could find a job, a warehouse job, in a city closer to them that they can, that basically they could find transportation to or walk to. And so in order for us to keep some of the businesses, to help attract some of the businesses, we decided we needed to look into a workforce transit program. We've got numerous cities around us that are, either have public transportation, so the city's not having to provide it themselves, or they are doing some type of program to offset the fact that they don't have public transit.
And that cost to, I guess, DCTA, is it fixed cost going forward every year?
It'll be something that we can renegotiate in the contract, but the first year, DCTA discovered that it was a lot more work than what they realized. And so that was the cost for this year. Again, that's something that, as we go back and prepare the next ILA, we can look at to see if there's something that we can do. Unfortunately, our hands are a little tied if that is their cost. It's hard for us to negotiate unless we take that on ourselves. And we just don't have the manpower to manage all the administrative functions ourselves, so.
But the idea is after we get, I guess, do the test pilot, pilot program, is to get the business to, I guess, to chip in and kind of take on the cost moving forward, is that?
Correct, so that's basically what we need to do. We have to do a real analysis, and since we haven't had a year that the programs existed without COVID-19, we haven't been able to find our real numbers yet, our real ridership numbers. So we're hoping this upcoming fiscal year will provide that. Then we can take that data and come back and figure out what the long-term solution is, whether that's, I don't want to throw this out there, but if it's a fixed route bus system, if it's, if it's to continue this program and go to the businesses and ask them to help. We don't know what that looks like yet, but that's exactly why we're doing the test program, is to gather the data so that we can, we can come back with a recommendation for what that long-term solution is.
And the people, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And those that are actually using this program, they're mostly, what type of businesses? Are we talking about small?
So the way we set it up, so when a business signs up, they do get a code. So certain, some of the large businesses get a unique code for their business. And then we clump together a lot of the smaller businesses into a more generic code. And so we've, that's where, basically, we've seen that we have ridership to a wide variety of those that have signed up. So there, I would say majority are the large businesses, but we are seeing some going to the small businesses as well.
The reason is, I see that you're saying that it's increased. I'm just trying to see if that does actually help the businesses that have signed up to actually retain them or what the result, end result was.
Absolutely, our feedback so far has been, everyone is very excited about the program, very thankful for the program. And again, I think when we first started this, they understood that there could come a point where we would look to them to help partner financially in the program. But we just needed to do the analysis first before we could, before we could come to that. But those that are utilizing it are definitely seeing the benefit of it.
So the program, Mark, go ahead.
Let me think how to put this succinctly. What percentage of the ridership, the companies that they work for, are going to be affected by the change in the sales tax laws?
For the warehouses, probably, I mean, I'd have to look and break down, but there are some that will be impacted by it, there are some that will not, so.
So, I mean, if there are 1,600 rides, what percentage of those are companies that are going to be impacted by the sales tax?
Right. I haven't done that percentage, I can do that and let you know. But I mean, I would say, again, there are a few of the businesses that I think we've recognized will be impacted, but there are several that will not be affected by the rule. But I just don't have it broken down by percentage, I'm sorry.
Could you, could you dig into that a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
I'd like to know those numbers. So I think that's part of the reason, you know, we're, we want to keep those companies here, but if we're losing revenue from them with this change, you know, I think that would be a strong message to give to them that, you know, we're no longer getting the revenue, you're going to have to step up. Well, we could share, but, you know, we can't do the lion's share so much.
I wanted to point out that this was a, this is a test program.
Yeah.
This was not necessarily designed or envisioned to be the solution. We were being hit by the companies that Mindy was talking about by a large, you know, contingent of the west side businesses claiming that they could not hire the appropriate hourly workers to come to work because the hourly workers couldn't afford transportation. And part of the messaging was that with the Silver Line coming in, that's going to continue to be, you know, I mean, one of the big benefits I see to the Silver Line is being able to get workforce here. But if we can't do the last mile delivery of that workforce, then it's not going to be very useful. And we were, we were looking at, I can't remember how many different, we looked at private taxis and buses and, you know, many, several different things, and this looked to be the most, well, I think it was the easiest to see the results and analyze. So the cleanest data, for not being a data person. Mark?
And, you know, there are a lot of small businesses and restaurants that need those same type of hourly employees. And we're not going to necessarily see that revenue go away.
Right.
So that's why it's important to kind of get a feel for this, I think.
The need is still going to be there, we just don't know how big it is.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Wes.
Don?
Two or three, two or three things. I knew at one point, we had, we even had some, I think there were some workers that would actually like get off on bus stops like south of 635 and actually walk north, cross 635 up into our, this program sort of helps address that, is that?
That's correct, yes.
Correct, and sort of get them from, not, not only transportation, but public safety or anything else, it sort of helps get them across there. I guess LIFT and DCTA are, they're good to go again, I mean, they're still on board to go again.
So DCTA has to go back to their board at their August meeting to basically seek the same kind of approval to move forward with negotiating the ILA again. So, but from staff's perspective, they believe they're willing to do it again.
Okay, and the last thing, do you have, do you have any feel for, like, you get a full year's worth of ridership? Sort of what, what metrics are what you're looking forward to say? What needs to, what needs to happen next, you know, at the end of next year? I mean, do you know, or is this really just sort of a data gathering?
It's really data gathering, but we, I'm laughing because Don's favorite word is metrics, so if you don't know that already. But essentially, what we'll do, and probably we'll have to start, again, we feel like the ridership has been negatively impacted by COVID. And so we haven't been able to really see what ridership would look like. So we're hoping that the growth we've already seen, as things have started to open back up, we'll continue to see it grow, so we'll be able to, maybe around May, really look at what the long-term need is, and then what the long-term solution would be. And so the reality is, to get to that long-term solution, we may have to have a little time of continuing a situation like this, if it's not even the long-term solution, just to get us to the long-term solution. But we just have to have that full ridership data to be able to really make an educated decision about how to proceed going forward.
This is a rather complicated scenario, and I'm going to borrow from Kent. When he was talking about the Beltline messaging, we've got six stops that are going to almost an infinite number of destinations. And so trying to put a, you know, a metric on that is, we need a lot of, we need a lot of ridership to establish the metrics. And that's part of what she's struggling with right now.
And it sounds, and it sounds like we just, we really don't, we really don't have good data, even after a couple of year trial, we've just really been blown out of the water.
By COVID.
Yeah.
And we looked at, I mean, we looked, we looked from the very beginning about a fixed bus route, but that was actually a lot more expensive than what we're talking about right now. And so that's why we felt like this provided us the most flexibility for both the employees, employers, and the city to try to gather that data, so.
Buses, even small ones, are very expensive compared to what we're doing here. John?
So how is this going to be impacted with our approval, whatever, once the DAR station comes in for us? Because I see six stations, but they could all obviously get to that point, right?
Right, so we feel like it will be an easier long-term solution. Maybe the only place we're picking up from, whether it's a fixed bus route or whatever the solution is, really, everybody could get to, hopefully, to the Silver Line station in Cypress Waters. And then we would only have that short commute from there. And again, this is designed just for the first mile, last mile connectivity. It's not door-to-door, it's really just from a fixed point to the west side or to the east side, wherever, wherever the routes would be, so.
I'm just thinking, if we're using the data now, it might be not really useful once that DAR station comes in.
I think, I mean, we could narrow down the transit stops if you think that would help in trying to, but I think, I think it will, because I think what we discovered is, everybody should be able to get to that Silver Line one way or the other, that Silver Line transit stop.
Don?
And the $50,000, is it already in the proposed budget?
It comes out of the Designated Economic Development Funds, so.
Okay, so it's already accounted for, it's not, okay.
In the first year, I think we designated $100,000, didn't we?
We did.
Okay.
And we used $19,000.
Yeah, it was.
We didn't, we really didn't know what the ridership was going to be. And in fact, like Mindy said, it got off to relatively slow start and was only starting to pick up when COVID hit. So it was, it was bad all the way around. Any other questions? Yes, Mark?
Yeah, you know, given what COVID did to this trial run, I think that we've got to give a full year to fully understand its impact and what, how the program needs to run in the future.
I was, I was sitting here thinking, is the 1,600 that we've seen so far, is that good or bad? And I wasn't, I don't have a, like you, I don't, I don't have a good feel for whether that's good or bad. It's just a data point, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment. So everybody shall, she go back to DCA, DCTA, excuse me, and ask for the ILA?
And again, this is with the understanding that the businesses know they're going to have to contribute moving forward.
That's, that will be part of the whole analysis that we do after we have more solid numbers for ridership.
Everybody good?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item D is discussion regarding memorial installations for placement on city-owned property. Ms. Jessica?
Hello, how are you this evening?
We're all good.
Good, good. Well, this evening I'm here as a follow-up to your work session discussion that you had in June that Mike had with you regarding the donation of monuments and memorials to be placed on city-owned property. So as a brief overview, again, during the work session discussion on June 8th, council expressed the desire for more information on how some of our surrounding cities are navigating these types of requests. So since then, staff have contacted the cities of Carrollton, Grapevine, Farmers Branch, Flower Mountain, Irving, for examples of memorial donation policies. At this time, Irving is the only city with a formal policy in place. And that policy is attached in your packet. The other cities do not have policies in place, but instead take these requests on a case-by-case basis and review them internally. So just additionally, the city of Irving does have one memorial in its city limits. It's a Gandhi Memorial, which was donated by an outside group. The cost of the memorial was slightly in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design, fabricate, and build, and has a long-term perpetual care maintenance fund in place. So that way it is able to be cleaned, cared for, and maintained throughout the years. Since then, Irving has had no other requests for memorials. They do have one additional memorial. It's a veterans memorial, but that was built internally with park bond funds. So this evening, I'd also like to quickly outline what guidelines we currently have in place within the city of Capel regarding memorials. And this will pertain just specifically to the park system. And then I'd like to seek some direction from council on how we will approach these requests as we move forward. So what do we have in place today regarding memorials? So back in two thousand and four, the Parks and Recreation Department developed the policy for partnership development to allow projects in the park system. That is a mouthful. So we developed this process mainly to guide the installation of memorial park benches in the park system. So that's memorial park bench pictured there. We currently have eight memorial benches within the park system. And just a little information on how that process works. So park staff have pre-selected a standard park bench, just like the one pictured there. Families then purchase the full cost of the bench, and then the department works with them on installation and location. And so we work with each family individually. We assist with the location and then the wording for the memorial plaque attached to the bench. So this policy also serves to guide the numerous boy and girl scout projects that we have going on at any given time in Capel. So if you're aware of the Eagle Scout program, typically, one of the kind of culminating projects of achieving the rank of Eagle Scout is to do a community-facing project. So we do have a, have a small committee within the department that sort of vets out and works with these scouts individually, which has been really rewarding. So one caveat of the current policy that we have in place just says the project or donation is to benefit the entire park going community. And I think that these park benches along our trail system are a perfect example of that. Anybody in the park, anybody using the park can use and benefit from that. So the main objective for this evening is to determine an approach for how the city, city should handle these requests for monuments or memorials going forward outside of the park system policy. So there's a few options here. We can continue to do what we're doing today. That is no formal memorial donation policy in place and take each request on a case-by-case basis similar to most of our surrounding communities. We can use the existing policy that the Parks and Recreation Department has in place that's already established. We could amend or expand upon that as needed. Or we can develop an entirely new policy for navigating donations of monuments and memorials. So I'll pause here, because this would be sort of our first decision point that we'd like council to weigh in and provide direction on.
Council? How much? John?
So you said that Irving is the only one that actually applied to the request. But do we know if other cities actually had any type of memorial statute in place that?
Yeah, a few do. Grapevine is, is a good example. As you know, they have that very, very beautiful nine eleven memorial right there at, what's that, Northwest Highway and Texan Trail or Dallas? I believe it's Texan Trail. So they do have that. And that, I think, was just, they did that internally through those.
The city, right?
I believe the city. I believe there was also some outside partnerships there. But they did that with no formal policy in place. So I believe all the, the funds were raised outside of the city, but the city, I think, assisted with that process.
So it's not like all the cities are getting bombarded with these requests, whether they have a policy in place or not?
Not typically, not, not from our research that we conducted. And we just surveyed our surrounding cities.
Did you by any chance get any sense that they're doing maybe case-by-case basis or?
Correct. That is what they are doing outside of Irving, who again, has a very, very thorough policy there attached. The rest of the cities did sort of add additionally, give us information that they just would like, they like to navigate these case-by-case.
Rihanna?
How many requests have we had for memorials?
Outside of like a park bench?
Right, outside of the park bench, yeah. And, and then outside of like whatever we've done on the city, right? Like the police department, just general requests.
To my knowledge, it's just one request.
Okay, in the la, I mean, ever, right?
Mr. Requain has twenty years of history there.
What makes my appearance? Is it okay from here?
You're fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Over the years, we've had numerous people that wanted a memorial, tree plantings especially, it was very popular, and, and a few other bench types, stone benches and so forth. That's pretty much it. But numerous trees were offered. And we started that program with then maintaining the trees, keeping the irrigation on them.
Right.
If they, if the trees didn't make it, then there was an issue. So we discourage trees in our policy.
Right, so, so outside of trees and benches, we've only had one request for something different?
As far as memorials.
Memorial, yes.
Other requests that, those structures within the city, but not, not memorials.
Okay, thank you.
This is awfully good.
Well, yeah, I guess for me, um, I, I would like to, I would say stay with one, continue to do what we are doing today. And then we could take it on a case-by-case basis. I think that, you know, I guess for me, as I look at number two and I look at number three, we're going to have to base it on something. And the question is going to be, what does that amendment look like? And it might be all over the place, right? And so that's what I'm concerned about, is we might get, we might go down a rabbit trail. We might restrict ourselves and not even know what might be coming down the pipeline. So for me, I would rather say, let's keep doing what we're doing and take each one on a case-by-case. And if we continue to have more requests, we can decide at a later time if a policy is needed.
Great.
Thank you.
Continue with what we're doing.
Don had his finger up too?
Well, I was just going to ask, so number one and number two, what's the difference? And number one, isn't the policy what we're doing today? Am I, did I miss?
So, yes, so the partnership for policy development, that really just sticks with memorial park benches through the Parks and Recreation Department.
And that's what we're doing?
That's what we're doing today currently. And since we've, to my knowledge, only had this one request for something outside of that policy, continuing to do what we're doing today is just still looking at larger requests on a case-by-case.
Okay.
With no, no additions or amendments to any existing policy.
I would tend to agree with the do what we're doing today.
I get to ask the question. What's that? I get to ask the question then. If we have no policy, we have no guidelines. When we have the request that we had before us today, we have nothing to base any evaluation of that request. So do you want us taking something like that through the Parks and Recreation Board? Because we don't have that guideline. Do you want them coming straight to the city council? Because we don't have that guideline. That's, that's, so this, continue to do what we are doing today? Because we have nothing to help the citizens who are making the request in terms of guidance. And I have nothing for us as staff to provide you to also make a decision. So continue what we're doing today. It's a one-off. We will be making it up as we go along. So how would you like us to handle it? That's how I'm interpreting, continue what we are doing today.
I'm looking at the policy here, and it has a whole list, list of criteria, so I.
If you'd like us to use that criteria.
That's number two.
Right.
Okay, and that's where I was confused. And then I'm saying, like, keep doing what we're doing as in.
Effectiveness, the, the, which you have before. That is what the, the policy for partnership development.
Yeah, the policy for partnership development, I guess, as a guide.
Right.
But then I guess I, I'd be curious, amend as needed. Yeah, I guess we just.
So as far as the, sorry, as far as the Irving one, do you know if the park, they themselves took a bond with the policy and made the decision? Or was it brought up to the city council and they made the decision? Do you know that?
What, contained within the policy, they do have, in terms of the actual development of the policy or the application and appeals process?
Approval.
Yes, so they do have steps, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my policy here. I believe the, the Parks and Recreation Department Director and the Parks Board are, are involved in the application approval process, as well as the city manager's office. And then I believe appeals process would go to a council level, but I can't think of that. No, I'm sorry. If the project is not endorsed by the Parks and Recreation Board, the applicant may appeal to the city manager or the city manager's designee for a final decision. So city council is not involved in their approval or appeals process at this time.
And I would say that is not a preferable place for the city manager to be.
You'd like to boot that upstairs.
Absolutely. If you don't have a policy, you leave. That's a bad place for staff to be.
That's not good.
No, it's not. Don, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to, so to clarify what you're saying, Mike, then. So we have a policy for park benches. But anything in addition to that gets thrown into the.
Once it's an outlier, right?
So anything beyond, any other type of requests gets thrown?
Right now, right now, our response is, right now, our response is either no, because this is all we have, or we have this one-off, and we keep getting asked, well, what can we do? What can we do? What can we do? And it doesn't benefit those who are asking, and it doesn't benefit you, and it doesn't benefit us. So having some type of guideline in place is helpful. I understand the messiness of it, but it is helpful. And, and I know that Mark is taking a look at it right now. There, there is some criteria that could be applied to the requ, to the, to any request, not just this request, but to any request. And for my, if I'm giving you a recommendation, you know, I know we're asking for the council, but if I'm giving you a recommendation, I don't know how often these things will come along. But having something that staff can at least respond to the citizens who are making the request, here's the guidelines that we would use as far as process, how that would work. That's always helpful.
And I probably was thinking.
That was the default.
That I was thinking?
I don't know. I asked what I was thinking, so I was wondering if you were thinking that with me?
Well, I was, I was thinking, yes, that that was, if any request came up, we said, well, here's a park bench for you.
Yeah.
That's, I guess, what I thought the policy was, is here's the option.
Yeah.
Yes, but that's not what this, that's not what this request is. This is a very. This is a very specific request. For not, for not a park bench.
So I guess I would have thought the policy would say, no, then, you can do a park bench.
That's not how that works.
Yeah. You did nothing but a park bench.
That, that could be the answer. And respectfully, the, the, the question continues. Because I, I don't have a, and I say I, meaning we don't have a way other than, because the request is they could come to council. And if they came straight to council, which they have the right to be able to do that, how would you make that decision? That's the question. It's not a question of how staff. It's the question of how would you make that decision? And the policy for partnership development does have, let's call it a checklist. If it meets these kinds of things, then at least you have a basis for being able to look someone in the eye and say, you know what? That either meets our criteria for the city of Capel or it doesn't meet the criteria for the city of Capel. That doesn't, at, at the end of the day, you're still potentially being put in that position to have to tell someone yes or tell someone no. But right now, you have no guidelines to make, so that decision becomes, excuse my term, arbitrary. And that's a bad place for public policy to be as well.
Agreed, and I, sorry, I guess I was, oh, go ahead, Cliff, sorry.
Yes. I kind of like, you know, in the, according to the memo, the Parks Board has got some criteria there as to even the park benches and that it needs to be something that's relevant to Capel and that it's for all the citizens of Capel generally. So it's not specifically carved out for twenty percent of the citizens or fifty percent or any particular number. I like that concept in the, so if we, you know, if we did something, I, I think it leads me to believe that we probably should have, deferring to the city manager, we ought to have something that the staff could use, at least initially, to say, okay, here's the broader framework within which we have decided that we would permit these things. And so at least that starts the conversation. And, and if you've got some thing that you want to do that just doesn't even get close, then you can walk away. I mean, that's, we don't have to get into a tussle.
Absolutely.
Rihanna?
And, and I guess that's where I was going, so wasn't trying to say, let's stay in gray land, right? But I, I guess I thought it was, or ambiguity, I guess I thought that, keep doing what we're doing, men. That it was, you know, based on, like you said, on the, as, as Cliff mentioned, on, on the memo, and there was some criteria that was being looked at and kind of what we have here in the policy for partnership development. Maybe that's kind of what I was looking at. And I guess when I saw number two, and then it said amend as needed, I started to think, what are all the things we're not going to allow? And I, I kind of want to get to the, go ahead.
I just took the amend as needed to apply to things other than park benches. That was the way I read that.
Gotcha, okay. And so maybe as I was looking at it, I guess I was trying to figure out a, what are all the things you can't do versus what are the things you can do? And I guess this depends on how you look at that. But, um, sorry, that was a legal hat I put on. I shouldn't have. I guess all that to say is that I want us to have some guidelines. I want the Park Board to be able to review that. I do agree that we should have something. And I guess trying to figure out what, where it fits if it's not a park bench. And the whole relevance to Capel is important. Just, they're just.
Can I, can I help?
Yes, please do. Please help me, Cliff.
I was going to help.
Oh, go ahead. Well, let the mayor help.
Go ahead, help me.
John had, John had his hand up first, though.
No, I was going to ask you, I know you were asking for direction right now, but I'm sure the city of Irving came up with this policy because it's been asked and they had to deal with it. Now, I know we didn't have any requests up to this point, but, you know, this might be an ideal time to look into that policy and see if it's comparable, that's going to work for our city as well, to give the guidance as well. But with that said, I would like to take a look at it a little more before I say, sure, adopt this Irving policy.
Yeah, so I don't, I'm not recommending adoption of, of the Irving policy by any means, unless that's council's desire. I will, I will say, I'll share with you, Irving, you know, provided some additional information that once, you know, folks have brought up the potential idea of a thought of a monument or memorial, when this Irving staff do sort of communicate and give this policy, the, just the, the, the thought of the perpetual maintenance agreement, pretty much folks had to self-select out of the process.
And that's, that's also what I.
Extremely difficult to achieve.
Right, that's why I was going to ask you, how much funding did they actually have to have in order to have something of a memorial placed on the city land?
Right, so the, the Gandhi Memorial was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they, I believe, I read maybe a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar a year perpetual maintenance fund somewhere in there. But there is, there is a fund to, I mean, those require cleaning, those types of statues of memorials, cleaning and maintenance inspections and things like that.
And that might also deter a lot of people too.
Correct, and, and that's what our contact.
So what I was going to suggest is, let's let Jessica go back and make a recommendation. And I'm sure she'll do her due diligence and look at Irving. And let's let her and her staff come back with what they would like to see implemented as a, I don't know, call it a modification of number two. I don't know how many, you were reading for an awfully long time. Was the list of requirements and exclusions that lengthy, or was it just?
No, it's not that lengthy. I think there's, um, there's a few things that you could possibly glean from. there's a few things that you could possibly glean from Irving's policy that you, you would want to insert in here to, uh, make it a little more rigorous.
Well, okay, then, let's not do Jessica's work for her, but let's let her go off and come back, and we'll give you the direction to go take a look and see what you would suggest, based on what you've heard here.
Great.
I mean, I think we have a good basis for this, um, partnership, um, agreement, and with some just nuanced changes, uh, we would be where we need, uh, need to be, but...
I think it was Cliff, the one thing I liked, and I think it's in there, is, you know, use far and with the citizens of Capel, so I like, you know, I'm sorry, I don't want to insert my opinion too much, but...
Yes, no, I agree, and...
I like that. Sure, agree, but I'll, but I'll do it anyway.
It's okay, it's quite all right, you are elected.
And the one last thing I'll, I'll add, just in relation to Irving's policy, something that we make, language we may consider adopting is that, um, even if, uh, the applicant can meet all the criter- criteria set forth in the policy, that the city's under no obligation to still accept that donation or monument. So that is a caveat in the Irving policy that I do think is a, is a great recommendation.
I do.
One, I do have one question, would you, are you, would you see this going before the Park Board?
I do, um, yes, and I, and I spoke with, with Ed Gion just yesterday regarding this issue, and said it might be coming, uh, to the Park Board's plate, and we do meet Monday night, so I'll be kind of debriefing them, and I, I'd like to loop them in on this process.
Okay, thank you, I like that. All right, anybody have anything else for Jessica? Thank you very much.
No, thank you for bringing it over and your clarification, and taking us out of the gray area.
The gray land.
Gray land.
Mr. Storch, you're welcome to stay.
I wish it, I'd look that up.
Okay, item number E. I almost missed this because it was on the second page, I'm sorry, Ms. Owens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, uh, this works, work session item tonight is to provide an update on the Open Meetings Act suspensions, uh, that were put in place at the beginning of the pandemic, uh, that we've all talked about tonight. And, um, so I just wanted to give you a brief update quickly. Do you know, I'm sorry, in March of 2020, uh, Governor Greg Abbott suspended certain open meeting statutes. Um, and in my memo, I mentioned, uh, the four big ones that we've listed on the tops of every agenda that we posted. Um, so a quorum of the City Councilor Board need not be present at one physical location. Uh, the meeting notice, meeting notice need not specify where the quorum of the Councilor Board will be physically present. The meeting held by video conference call is not required to be open to the public at the location where council is present, and the audio and video feed are not required to meet minimum standards as established by DIR, or the Department of Information Resources. Um, so as of September 1st, those suspensions will be lifted by Governor Abbott's office. Um, this body, as well as council-appointed boards and commissions, uh, will be subject to the full provisions of the, of the Open Meetings Act. Um, so again, just, you know, flip those bullet points. Uh, council or board members are still allowed, if necessary, to attend a meeting via video conference. Um, it's just that the video, the, I always trip myself up, the quorum of council must be present at a physical location that the meeting notice has. Um, so if we list that 255 Parkway is where the council, where the quorum of the council will be present, they cannot be remote as well. I think I just tripped myself up, I'm so sorry.
So in other words, we have to have five people here.
Exactly, that is, that is true, and so I've, I've talked myself into a corner. But, um, so the audio and video feed must meet minimum requirements, minimum standards as established by DIR, and any notice of the meeting must include a physical location that the quorum of a council is present at. Um, so this really doesn't change a lot for City Council, we've been, um, compliant under the Act for many, many months. Um, this is a change that most of the boards and commissions will start to feel because they've been still, um, holding their meetings in a virtual environment. But City Council has been fully compliant with this, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. It just serves as an update.
And you thought you tied, you thought you tied yourself into a knot there, and there are no questions?
That's great.
All right, so I'm not even gonna ask, uh, I'm just following the, the number of reporting cases going on right now, it's headed in a bad direction, but we'll go there later.
Sure.
Um, no, no other questions for Ashley? Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is 7:03 PM. Regular session is adjourned, and we will reconvene in, I'm sorry, the...
Work session.
Work session is adjourned, and we will reconvene into regular session at 7:30.
You ready? Pack up some groceries?
Councilmember Long, you're taking advantage of...
Howdy, everyone, welcome to the Capel City Council. We have adjourned from work session and are entering into regular session, the time is 7:30 PM. Just as a reminder, as a reminder, persons wishing to, to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register outside the council chamber and present to the city secretary, please list your name and your residence. Uh, tonight, for our invocation, we have Bishop Harris with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints giving the invocation, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. And just as a note, we did change the side of the dais that the flag is located on, so it will be to your left. Bishop Harris.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this evening, we're grateful for this day, we're grateful for those who serve here, we're grateful for this city, we're grateful for thy many blessings, we're grateful for thy Son, Jesus Christ. Father, we ask thee that thou wilt bless those who serve here in our city. Bless them, bless their families, help them to find wisdom, and help them to be successful. Help them to live the First and Second Greatest Commandments, to love thee and to help others to love their neighbors. We pray that we can follow thee and thy Son, Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Please be seated. Anybody signed up for citizens' appearance?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, we will move on to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. Our consent agenda is routine in nature and generally is enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through our budget process or through previous council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately, full descriptions have been scrolling through the screen. Council, is there any item that you desire to have pulled and considered separately? And I will entertain a motion. Mayor Protem Kenaosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Thank you, do I have a second? Uh, Councilmember Hill. In favor, please say aye.
Long, Long Kenaosa Smith, Carol Jun, ma- Carol Jun Hill, in favor, non-opposed, the motion carries.
Abbott, sorry. All right, item number eight, um, Judge Primrose, would you please come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, um, everyone here. Um, I think it's now time, um, we just appointed a new alternate municipal court judge, and I think it is now time to swear that person in, if that's okay to proceed. Thank you, Judge White. Judge Sandra White, um, has just been appointed our new alternate municipal court judge. Um, she is a, currently a judge in the City of Dallas, she's been a judge for a long time. Um, she teaches, she teaches paralegal, she teaches, um, other lawyers, so she's gonna teach us a lot. So we're so honored to have her here today, and, um, she was appointed, we thank you, and now's the time to swear in, so she can be official.
Thank you, Judge Primrose.
Okay.
Thank you, City Council.
And if you'll do me a favor, I need you to raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Sandra White.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the Office of Municipal Court Alternate Judge...
Of the Alternate Municipal Court Judge...
Of the City of Capel...
Of the City of Capel...
The State of Texas...
The State of Texas...
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve...
Preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And the laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Primrose.
And we have one more, for judges, we have two. Okay, one more, then you'll really be official. I, please state your name.
I, Sandra White.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I have not directly or indirectly paid...
That I have not directly or indirectly paid...
Offered...
Offered...
Promised to pay...
Promised to pay...
Contributed...
Contributed...
Or promised to contribute...
Or promised to contribute...
Any money or thing of value...
Any money or thing of value...
Or promised any public office or employment...
Or promised any public office or employment...
For the giving or withholding of a vote...
For the giving or withholding of a vote...
At the election...
At the election...
At which you were elected...
At which I was elected...
Or as a reward to secure my appointment...
Or as a reward to secure my appointment...
Or confirmation...
Or confirmation...
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Primrose.
One picture.
One picture.
You're gonna need that in a second.
Okay, all right, oh, gotta take a picture first.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Judge White, we've been hearing from Judge Primrose, would you like to say a little something?
That's right, let's, let's... Here you go.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, the Capel City Council for their vote of confidence in me today, and I look forward to working with Judge Primrose here at the City of Capel and serving the citizens of Capel. Uh, I know that she loves working here, and she and I sort of have a camaraderie together, and I, I know I will love it just as much as she does, and I anticipate to get started just as soon as possible, so that I can, uh, learn the particular ropes of this particular court and how she likes things done, and to, uh, uh, sit on the bench when she's not available, and to do the magistrations when she and the other alternates aren't available. And to get to know the citizenry that come forward here to the, uh, to the court, and specifically also to work with the Police Department, they're a big part of how the courts operate. And so, uh, I would like to say, there was a, an incident when I was here during the interview process that really touched my heart, and it let me know just what type of city Capel was. I was in the lobby of the police and courts building, and a police officer came out. There was a little boy there with, I think, probably his grandmother. He gave him a patrol car, uh, and then a few minutes later, he came back out and asked the little boy if he'd like to go to actually see a squad car, and just to see that child's face light up and want to do that. And, and, and I want, I think it was important that the grandmother, if she was his grandmother, brought him to the Police Department to get his first, what I'm assuming as a six-year-old, was his first encounter with the Police Department, and it was obviously a good encounter, and he's going to remember that as he grows older. So that let me know just what type of city the City of Capel was, and I'm, uh, looking forward to working here, thank you.
So thank you very much, it, it's very nice to have you here, welcome to the City of Capel, we're, we're very happy to have you, and I'm very glad that your first experience dealing with our Police Department and the little boy that you talked about was as positive an impact as he, as our officer had on him. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
And I, I just, oh, no, you're good, I just wanted to say welcome and, and thank you for choosing Capel. Um, I know that with someone with your credentials could work anywhere, and all that to say, we're excited to have you, we are a close-knit community, and, um, thank you for, um, in advance for your service, truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number nine, and I'm gonna let Ms. Miller come forward and explain item, read item number nine into the record and explain it for us all.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number nine, consider approval of a maximum proposed tax rate of .58 for the 2021 tax year, and to set the public hearings on the budget and the proposed tax rate for the next regularly scheduled council meeting on August 10th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. This item is proposing a maximum tax rate of 58 cents and is a record vote, which is now required by Senate Bill 2, regardless of the tax rate being proposed. This record vote is required to be included in our Notice of Meeting to Vote on the Tax Rate publication, which must occur at least five days prior to the public hearings. This notice will be published on July 31st. The public hearing and, meeting is scheduled on August 10th at 2021 at 7:30 PM. Just want to emphasize, this item is not a vote to adopt the tax rate, it's only a vote to publicize that the tax rate will not exceed 58 cents. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, uh, Council, any questions? Yes, Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Miller, where is this going to be published?
It's in the Rambler, the official newspaper for the city.
And is that the only newspaper that we're gonna be... And is that the only newspaper that will be published yet?
They do it in the Advocate online.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number nine.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long Keanahosa Smith, Carol Dun Hill in favor, none oppose. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, item number 10 is our city manager report, project updates and future agenda.
Mayor and Council, several points, updates regarding some construction. Councilman Long, Great Mine Springs Wall Repair Project is moving forward. They're actually working on the replacement of the failed diversion wall right now. No, I'm not. That's the reason I'm telling you. There's a long story behind all this, but it should be completed by the end of September. The dredging of the canal is scheduled to begin in early August, and it will take about 30 to 45 days. Project is scheduled for completion October 1. The Beltline Reconstruction bid is out currently, and the contract is expected to be awarded on August the 10th, should everything go okay. The Denton Creek Outfall Structure Projects in the Hollywood Parker area is advertised for bids and will be presented to council in August. Stream G6 Gabion and Soil Nail Work continues. The Village Parkway Backup Generator and Sandy Lake Lift Station projects are expected to be awarded in September. And then the Airline Reconstruction Street Paving Project has been completed. The contractor is still working on driveways, and then will start on sidewalks. Final completion is still the end of August, so hopefully that'll be opening up here pretty soon. Mayor and Council, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is mayor and council reports. This is a report on the city council on recent and upcoming events. Our next budget workshop will be on Thursday, July 29, beginning at 6:00 PM here in Town's second-floor conference room. The city council will conduct our final budget review for fiscal year 2022. Residents can send in questions and comments, recording the budget to budget input at capeltx.gov. And of course, the meeting is open to the public, and the public is welcome to attend. You can participate in our local government and give back to our community by serving on one of our boards and commissions. The city is seeking passionate individuals to be a part of our boards and commissions that help guide our development, our future needs, regulations, and all for the good of Capel. Applications will be accepted online at capeltx.gov/boards beginning on August 2 through September 13, 2021. Interviews will be conducted in October based on our applicants. That is all from the mayor and council reports. Item number 12, council committee reports. These are items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A, Councilmember Hill on the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Louisville ISD.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is the update for Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. This summer, CFB ISD teachers and staff are out and about, participating in-home visits throughout CFB to welcome new families to the community. This is a pilot program that's led by volunteers and staff who are visiting homes where new families have recently moved into CFB ISD, and the purpose of this program is to, and these visits are to help build relationships and create a family environment. The next item, the Texas Legislature did not approve funding of a bill that would have expanded online learning in Texas and provided funding for a full-time virtual academy. Current legislation gives full state funding to only a few full-time virtual schools that were in existence prior to 2013. Without this approved funding, CFB had to discontinue its planning for a virtual academy. Also, without this bill, virtual schools are not approved or accredited, including CFB ISD Virtual Academy Program. Administrators are currently participating in the annual administrators' academy this week while preparing for the first day of school, which is August the 10th. Enrollment for the 21-22 school year is underway, and 100% of the process is online at cfbisd.edu. So let's move on to Louisville's update. One second while I switch over to that. So as I mentioned earlier, in June, school districts learned that the TEA, learned from the TEA, that the district will not receive funding for full-time virtual learning. And unfortunately, without that funding, LISD will not be able to move forward with full-time virtual learning for elementary, middle, or high school students. LISD is applying for elementary and secondary school emergency relief, known as SER3 funds, to address the impact of COVID-19 on elementary and secondary schools, which were authorized by the American Rescue Plan of 2021. The district received input from stakeholders to help the district create a plan for using these funds, and a final plan will be, be available soon online. The district is hiring for multiple positions right now, and if you're interested, go to lisd.net/careers for more details. And the first day of school for Louisville is Wednesday, August 11. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. Item B is report on Capel ISD. It's listed as Councilmember Kevin Neville's, who happens to be stranded in Phoenix. As I understand, he missed a, or I think his flight was diverted. So Ms. Owens is going to be kind enough to read that into the record for him.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Neville's is reporting that CISD is preparing for back-to-school, and the first day of school is on Tuesday, August 17. The district has a parent hub website at capelisd.com backslash parent hub, hub is spelled H-U-B, that covers all things back-to-school, including important dates, links, and more. The district is also busy communicating with parents about bus passes, schedule pickup, school supply lists, lunch accounts, specific elementary school details, and much more. For those with young children, Meet the Teacher Night will be on Thursday, August 13 at 5:30 PM, and the district will also be able to continue to provide free meals for elementary school students for the upcoming school year. CISD New Hire Lunch and Expo in partnership with the Capel Chamber of Commerce is Wednesday, August 11 at CMS North. And as staff and educators return to campus, they are engaging in professional learning to help them better meet the needs of our students, and this includes work to address any unfinished learning that may have occurred over the last school year. The CISD website is a valuable resource for our community, so we encourage you to go there and see all things CISD. And finally, with the Olympics underway, we wanted to mention that one of our own CHS alumni, Chiaka Obugue, is on the USA Olympic volleyball team, and we cheer her on during these Olympic Games. And that concludes the report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item C is report on Capel seniors. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. We haven't had any meetings yet, and we were actually scheduled to have the meeting, first meeting tomorrow, but due to COVID, they have actually changed the monthly potluck lunch to brownback learning table, which means that they're going to be bringing their, bringing their own lunch, and they're also changing the monthly meeting to a quarterly meeting on every fourth Wednesday of the month. So it'll likely be that there will be less reporting as to their senior center activities. And let's see, and they will actually have a council update, and then they will have a learning presentation from someone from the city for the senior to learn, have an opportunity to learn, or to get a refresher course from fire, police, utilities, et cetera. So the first meeting is right now scheduled for September 22 at 11:30 AM at the senior center, and the plan is to get together with the seniors to see how they feel about changing the monthly to quarterly, to see if they have any input on that. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you very much. I know that that group is very anxious to get back together, so, as we all are. Item number 13, public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Are there any public service announcements? Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Saturday evening is going, there's going to be a play at the Art Center, which is the first play that the Capel, the Capel Theater Group has had in a very long time. I don't know exactly how long, but a very long time. Makes no difference. It's going to be at 8 o'clock in the Black Box. This will be the first performance in the Black Box, and so those of us that'll be there are excited about that opportunity, and you can get your tickets through the Art Center.
Thank you very much. So what's the name of the, do you know the name of the show?
Cinderella.
Ah.
Sorry, John.
Thank you very much. Any other public service announcements? There was no action necessary from the executive session, so therefore there being no further business before this council. We are adjourned at 7:54 PM.